Call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission of the town of Los Gatos for May 8, 2013. May we have a roll call, please, Mr. Poulsen.
Commissioner Seauk?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Commissioner Boujoua?
Here.
Vice Chair Smith?
Here.
Chair Erickson?
Here.
And Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Birch have excused absences.
We would invite everyone to please stand and join Commissioner Smith in who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The town of Los Gatos and this Planning Commission strongly encourages active participation by the public in all public meetings of the town and in particular, the meeting of the Planning Commission. There are three opportunities for the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. First is written comments on agenda items that are delivered ahead of time and incorporated in the staff report. There are two opportunities to address the Commission at a meeting as there are this evening, both in what is called the verbal communications portion of the meeting where a member of the public can address the Commission on any issue that they would like to that is not on the agenda for that evening and also during the public portion of the public hearing of items on the agenda. If there are members of the public who are here this evening who would like to do either of the letter too, there are speaker cards on the back of the benches in the chamber. We would ask that you fill those out and give them to the recording secretary to our left so that we could properly identify you at the appropriate moment as we move forward through the meeting. We have minutes from the April 24 meeting, the last meeting of the Planning Commission that were distributed to the Commission. Are there corrections to the minutes or other comments on the minutes or a motion to approve? Commissioner Boujoua?
I move that the minutes of April 24 be approved as submitted.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Talisfor?
Yes.
Are any other comments about the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. There are no written communications this evening, is that correct?
Correct.
We have a requested continuance this evening, which is agenda item number one on tonight's agenda, which is a continued public hearing from our meeting on April 10. Does the staff have any additional comments to our information about the requested continuance?
No additional comments.
Are there any comments from a Commissioner on the requested continuance or a motion to grant the continuance? Commissioner Boujoua?
I'll move to grant the requested continuance for Architecture and Site Application S-13017 to a date uncertain, and I'm very encouraged that they're pursuing a single-story option.
Motion by Commissioner Boujoua, is there a second? Commissioner Talisfor?
I will second that for the same reason. I think that often when people have a second go-around at looking at design and impacts, especially in these neighborhoods of the kind that where they're so, you know, where they're so close together, this is going to work out well, so, yes.
Any other comments about the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. In addition to serving on the Planning Commission, members of the Planning Commission serve on several other committees of the town. One of those is the General Plan Committee, which met earlier this afternoon, and Commissioner Boujoua will give us a report on that meeting.
Thank you, Chair Erickson. The General Plan Committee meeting met just prior to this meeting, and as most of you are aware, we've been discussing the affordable housing overlay zones for quite some time. And at the prior meeting, we had given staff direction to move forward with a revised list of sites. There had been new information after we made that decision that a couple of the sites, including the Accura site and the Bentley site, have had long-term commitments from their tenants, being the Accura and Bentley dealerships, which no longer make them a viable site, according to the state, because they have 30-year tenants already. So, we had to take a look at new sites and new densities, and we came up with a new set of recommendations for staff to start proceeding with environmental review.
Thank you, Commissioner Boujoua. Are there questions for Commissioner Boujoua? We would now move to the portion of the agenda, which is verbal communications, where any member of the public can speak on any issue that they would like to that's not on the agenda this evening. Does that look like there's anyone who wants to do that? There are no items on a consent calendar this evening. There are no continued public hearings, other than agenda item number one, which was continued a moment ago. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for Architectural Site Application S-13-007, which is requesting approval to demolish an existing pre-1941 single-family residence and to construct a new residence and a detached garage with reduced side and rear yard setbacks. May I have a show of hands of Commissioners who visited the site? Are there any disclosures by a Commissioner for this item? If not, may we have a staff report?
Staff does not have anything to add to the report, other than the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting to present the plans to the surrounding residents, and staff has not had any contact from any neighbors or property owners in the area. I'm available if you have any questions about the, I think the report was very thorough and gave you a lot of information, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Avila. Commissioner Talisfor?
All right, I have one question to start with. I'm just curious, I noticed that the, in the set of conditions, that the chimneys on this proposal are wood burning. So, my question to you is, I thought that for reasons of air pollution and being more green, environmentally friendly, that we were going for more, you know, gas-type fireplaces. And where I'm going with this is that the chimneys, at this point, seem to add some bulk to the outside of the setback that's been reduced between the property lines. So, can I have a clarification on that and where the town policy is?
Well, the applicants can comment as to whether those are gas appliances, but they just have the chimneys for architectural features. The town does not prohibit new wood-burning fireplaces. If you do have new wood-burning fireplace, then it has to meet EPA standards. So, you are allowed to have a wood-burning fireplace, but I would defer to the applicant to, as to whether or not those are gas appliances and those are actual functional chimneys or just architectural features.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I did have one.
Have at it.
The lots on this, on Filmer, are they, the setbacks, are they all non-conforming?
There are some, it's a fairly old neighborhood, and so there are some non-conforming setbacks. In this case, it's just a detached garage that's requesting reduced setbacks, and that's fairly common with a detached structure. The code actually has a provision allowing setbacks to go to three feet with approval through an architecture and site approval or a minor residential application. So, that is something we commonly see, and there are a lot of non-conforming setbacks in this particular area, as well as like the Johnson-Loma Alta Harding.
Right, right, because it goes with the pattern of how they develop those neighborhoods. So, this setback at, this is 25 feet?
The front setback is 25 feet.
Right, and that's town code?
That is the requirement for the R-18 zone.
Okay, and do we know what the setback is for the adjacent neighbors?
They are proposing a 25-foot front setback on this, however, so the front setback is conforming.
It's conforming to town code, but it's, I wanted to know what the adjacent neighbors' setback was.
We don't have that information.
Thank you.
It does look like, if you look at the shadow study and it shows, it does show they want adjacent home, and it is fairly similar in terms of the front setback. It looks like it's slightly further behind than 25 feet.
Right, that's on C3 of the elevations.
Correct.
And I did notice that, and I just wanted to confirm that that was the case. So, what I'm seeing on the applicant's proposal is that it's in front of the house next to it, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? If not, we'll move to the public portion of the public hearing and provide the applicant up to five minutes to address the Commission, and I believe Tony Jeans will be representing the applicant. Mr. Jeans, please state your name and address for the record.
Tony Jeans, One Bay View, Unit 4, Los Gatos. Just to follow up on answering the question, all the setbacks on the house are legal, the chimneys legal, the front setback is, in fact, the same as the house next door, we just have a bigger overhang at the eve, so it looks as though it's further on the, on C3, but they're 25 and we're 25. The side setbacks are compliant. The only thing that is non-compliant that we're requesting is a four-foot setback on the garage. The neighboring homes at the rear and at both sides have setbacks around two feet, actually, for the garage. If you have questions, I'll address anything that you want to talk about. There are things that I'm sure might interest you, we're taking down a lot of trees. We've had an arborist report commissioned, the city or the town also had an arborist peer review, and both are in agreement that the trees are in pretty bad shape and should come down and be replaced with better trees, with the exceptions of the ones that we're keeping. We're keeping the street tree, we're keeping a cedar on the left and some minor trees, but the front trees that you see there will be going. We've had a lot of positive support from the neighbors, which is why I don't think we have any real opposition to what we're proposing. We went to the town consulting architect and have gone through a series of revisions. There is one item that remains outstanding. Town is in support of what we're proposing, but I would like to bring this to your attention, and it is shown behind, but I will address it here. Specifically, what we are proposing is a front gable on the front here. You can see it on the front rendering, the front elevation, you can see it significantly below the height of the roof, the peak of the roof, so it purposely is trying to not project above the ridge when you look at the house. That is what we would like to propose. We think it's very consistent with the architecture of the house, where we've used gables all the way around, and we would like to keep that. We like that architectural look, and we think it gives it some integrity. The alternative proposal is to replace that with a shed dorma across the front. We don't think that that helps any in the scale and mass of the house, which is what you might be looking for, and we think it actually detracts from the appeal of the house. So, my clients would like to have you consider this, which the staff supports, and approve the project that way. If you look further down the street, starting about six homes away, you can see a house which is about five feet taller than ours. This is 30 feet tall, this is just nearing completion. They've used gables. They're more prominent because they project forward and they're at the higher elevation. The next house down, again, has gabled dormas, not shed dormas. The next house is down closer, again, use gables all the way down, so it's a very common feature on the street. And yet again, more gables as we approach the house, and yet again, more. So, it's a very consistent feature through the street, and we don't see the need, in this particular instance, to go to a shed dorma. I'm available to answer questions about that or anything else, but I don't think that we had any controversial issues with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeans. Are there questions for the applicant? Commissioner Boujoua?
Thank you, Mr. Jeans. I just wanted to follow up on staff's comment that you guys held a neighborhood meeting. Could you let us know, you know, how many neighbors showed up, and were there any concerns about the height or the bulk or the mass? Are any of these issues with the neighbors?
I mailed everyone within 300 feet, telling them what we were proposing and saying that I would be out there on a Saturday morning between 9:30 and 10:30, and if they wanted to come, please, they're very welcome, just be careful walking the property, because it's a little dangerous. I would say half a dozen turned up. Everyone was supportive of what we were trying to do. They thought it was a vast improvement. In addition to that, I spoke to immediate neighbors at more length individually by visiting them at their houses, both on the sides and across the street. Not everyone was even bothered. You know, a couple of people, even though they were immediate neighbors, said, "Yeah, it's fine, good, great." And, you know, they glanced at the plans, but did no more than that. So, I didn't really, I had no negative feedback, really.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Jeans? Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you very much. It's a nicely designed home, you know, I feel like Mr. Cannon does, but I, and with all due respect, we have to look at our town guidelines in evaluating this, and I'm referring to the residential design guidelines here, it's not my opinion. But, what I'm thinking, what I'm seeing here is, it's a, I know we're, in the staff report, they refer to gable versus shed roof, but actually, I think what we're talking about here is trying to diminish, take the focus off the mass of the house, because it, because what I'm, what I fear is because we'll be losing a lot of the landscaping that's been there for a long time, that when we have the house at 25-feet setback, it's going to present itself in a rather more overwhelming way, because there will not be the vegetation to grace and to subdue it. So, my question to you is, how would you consider doing the shed roof for those reasons? And/or, the other question I have for you, is the setback, can, I looked at the shadow study, and it looks like the proposed house is in front of the adjacent home to its left, if you're facing it, would be to the left. So, can you tell me how it, how you could, or can you, or I would like to know if you could move that back? I mean, I'm seeing the adjacent home as maybe coming halfway to that porch. I don't know exactly how to explain this to you. Do you have, you know what I'm talking about?
The adjacent home is 25 feet, and we're proposing 25 feet as well.
Well, I know, but that's not what I'm talking about. From the shadow study report, because that's all I can see here, it looks like your proposal is further toward the street than the adjacent home. So, am I seeing that incorrectly?
No, you're not.
Town code aside, it's...
You're looking at this one here, and you're, what I think you're saying is that the alignment of this is a little bit behind the alignment of that.
Right.
And I'm saying we have a slightly, we have a two-foot overhang, they don't have much of an overhang on that. The actual footprint of the porch itself is the same as their setback. And the other thing that we did, if you can, if you look at the, if you look at the front here, by making this a porch at the front, and by bringing the front of the house forward at only the single-story level, the bulk and mass of the house starts considerably further back than that line that you're looking at on the shadow study. So, even this point here, which you could say is the item that's in discussion, whether a shed dorma or a gable, that is less, well, we were trying to keep it below the viewing line of the ridge, so that it doesn't look as massive as some of the photographs of houses along the street that I showed you, which had the gable very, very prominently displayed, and...
But we're looking at this house, so, Mr. Jeans, what I'm seeing here, what I'm referring to is in the Residential Design Guidelines 2.2.2, where it says, "Provide front facade articulation similar to those predominant in the neighborhood." And it said, there's a, what I'm seeing is existing house, new house, and then what not to do, and what to do, and I'm seeing that, well, you have to look at it, but anyway, it looks like they're very similar in setback, and I'm seeing, I'm seeing a difference.
All I can say is that the setback that we are proposing...
Is that the porch? Is that the porch that is out in front?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so could, and this could be moved back? Is there a way that you could move?
I do not propose to move it back, no.
You don't?
It could be, but no.
The concern I have is that...
We want to keep it where it is shown at 25 feet, which is the same as all the other houses on the street.
Okay, it's, why is it, then, what am I not understanding? What am I not seeing? Someone help me.
Mr. Seauk?
So, if I understand correctly, what we're looking at, at the shadow study then, is it necessarily the footprint, it's the overhang of your porch?
Yes.
And how, what is the overhang in terms of dimension?
Two feet.
Two feet?
And it's projecting forward two feet more on that shadow study. And the shadow study was not necessarily, is not necessarily 100% accurate as to the positioning of the house front to back. What I was asked to do was measure the distance from the fence to the neighboring house, if there was any close neighboring house, to show that there would not be a significant impact of the shadow on the neighboring house. And it may well be that I positioned it a foot or two out of alignment, but I am letting you know that we are in line with, our porch is in line with the front of their house. So, we're not going to be in front of them, and the portion that is in, that is at the front of our house is a single-story porch, which is not a major massive element. It's meant to transition you visually into the house to give it a more aesthetic feel. Yes?
And a follow-up, if I may, and please tell me if I'm misinterpreting. I think one of the other comments that I heard from Commissioner Talisfor is that because the landscaping will be removed, you'll just have a prominent house, do you plan on any landscaping to replace what's existing?
Yes, if you, if you look at, if you look at the sheet which has landscaping on it, which is C2 or C3, we are planning on...
Is that?
C1, actually.
Six major trees, 36-inch box, which are huge, and then... C1, correct. Six major trees, 36-inch box, which are huge, and, and then 23, 24-inch box trees. And those are screening around the edge. Now, those will not be what you typically regard as trees. They are large shrubs because the neighbors along the side have asked for, not a high screen, because the problem with the trees that are there now is they're very dangerous. They're dropping limbs, they're dropping litter over onto the neighboring properties as well as on the property itself. And what they've asked me to do is plant a screen that probably grows to about 12 feet, so you can look at C1 and see trees spaced about every eight feet along the property line. And in addition to that, about six fairly significant trees that are proposed, one at the front, three along one side, and a couple in the rear, to replace some of the coverage, because there is a canopy count that you have to do. And we may still have to provide some money to the Parks and Public Works Fund, because I don't think we can really replace all of the canopy coverage on this particular lot. So we're doing what we can. We're doing what the neighbors want. There is a large cedar to the left of the house, which on C1 is towards the top right, adjacent to the porch. And that will provide, that is significantly taller than the house already, and it will provide quite a significant balance, I think, for the house. That tree's about 40 feet tall.
Commissioner Smith.
Well, actually, I was going to mention that a Western red cedar is actually screening part, part of that porch.
Yeah.
Anyway, so what I did want to comment on is that I, I do, I think the design is very good. And in traveling the neighborhood, I do understand your position about the gables. I saw many of those myself, and I did feel that the roof forms and the pitches did comply with 2.3.4 of the residential guidelines. So I'm, I understand Commissioner Talisfor's interest in reducing bulk and mass. But I, the way I see the home, I do think it fits into the neighborhood, and it's a very good design. And keeping that tree, though, I want to go back to the tree. That's, the trees were in such bad shape. So do you have to do something to that tree before it's, it's, you have to trim it down?
The cedar?
Have to feed it? Do you, it's looking, it's looking sad.
It's looking more happy than the other trees.
Okay. And I understand why you want to keep it, and I, and I, it's going to enhance the property.
Yes. We will, we will put tree protection fencing around it, and we will mulch cover the area around it. I can't recall whether either of the arborists suggested specific treatment for that tree, but I will consult with our arborist. And if he has some recommendations specific for that tree, then we will implement them. I think that's a good idea to check.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? If not, thank you, Mr. Jeans.
Thank you.
We would provide an opportunity for any members of the public who would like to comment on the project to address the commission. If not, the applicant would have another three minutes to comment if he chose.
Well, I'll just show you one last picture, just so we reinforce. So these are the two options that we're really, we have shown over there. This is the one we want. This is the one we would prefer not to have. We don't believe that this is more massive than the one that is proposed here, and we think it's more in keeping with the neighborhood. And we ask you to approve the one at the top with the gable rather than the shed dormer. Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Back to the, the trees for just a minute. I noticed that on the report of, well, it's on page 15 of the, the report by Richard Gessner.
Yep.
I see that you have some trees that are, conditions are good, but it, the disposition is either remove or retain. And I was specifically looking at the privates that, that are pretty substantial. Are they going to stay?
Privates are going. They're incredibly leggy. And it would be far better to replace them with something that can effectively be used for neighbor screening. They're-
Have you chosen what that is?
We, we've got three possibilities. There's a laurel, which is, grows into a hedge about 12 feet tall. And that is a drought tolerant. It's non-native, but it's been in this country for 20, about 200 years. Myrica californica is an alternative, which is native. It's also drought tolerant. And there's a third one that's a redder color, the name of which I don't remember, which I also like. But we haven't made a final selection. The intention was to talk to some of the neighbors and say, put one of each, and say, "Look, we're looking at these three. Do you have any particular preferences?" You know, we're not at that stage yet. I think when we take the trees down that are there, it'll be more important for them to be involved in that dialogue, because it's going to change. They're aware of it, and they're, they are encouraging us to do it. But it will be very different along the sides. And, you know, they've, I mean, they've been good, and I'm, I'm sure that we will be, respond to that and can give them some input. The prices are around the same. The quality of cover is about the same. It's more a visual thing than anything.
Right. I understand that, if I ask a question. Thanks.
Other questions of the applicant? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Jeans. We'll now close the public portion of the public hearing, hearing, and ask the commission if they have questions of, further questions of staff, comments on the application, or a motion for consideration by the commission. Commissioner Bujua.
I'm going to get us kicked off with a motion. I, I really appreciate the thought that went into this design. I think it's a good design. I think it fits in well to the neighborhood. It is a little bit of a challenging neighborhood. There's houses in transition. You've got one-story, two-story, one-and-a-half stories. I think this is a very sensitive design to the neighborhood. I do think the shed dormer might reduce the visual bulk a little bit, but that wasn't a real significant issue for me. So I would like to, I do think the gable dormer is, is a better design for the house. I think it, it fits in with the overall architecture of the house. So I'm in support of that. The other thing, the exception for the garage, I think, the setback reduction, I think it's, for a couple of important reasons, it's that, that having that driveway and garage in the back is consistent with the pattern in the neighborhood. There are other similar garages with the same or less setbacks on, on neighboring homes, walking up and down the street. It's, it's a very clear pattern that that is a neighborhood pattern. So I think there's ample justification for that reduction in setback. I, I wasn't even concerned about the front setback. I've heard some discussion, but it, it seems to me that if the storyboards are correct, it's at the exact same location as the front of the existing house. There is a portion of the neighborhood house that's up there, and then some of it's setback. That's just kind of an architectural choice of that house, I think. But the pattern in the rest of the neighborhood, I think, is fairly consistent with the existing smaller house that's there. So for those reasons, I am going to make a motion to recommend approval of Architecture and Site Application S13-007 at 18 Filmer Avenue. And that is for the demolition of the pre-existing 1941 single-family residence, and to construct new residence and attached garage with the reduced side and rear setbacks for that garage. And that would be with the gable dormer. I can make the findings that this product is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15303 of SEQA. And reading through, I believe it was Historic Preservation, they did support the demolition of this house. So I can make the findings under Section 2910-09030E of the Town Code for the demolition. I do find that it is consistent with the residential design guidelines, and that it is consistent with Section 292150 of Town Code for granting the approval of Architecture and Site Application. And for the, the reasons I stated, I think I can make the findings for granting a reduced setback as per Section 2940-015B1. And therefore, I recommend approval of the application with the conditions contained in Exhibit 3. That's my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bujua. Commissioner Smith?
I will second the motion.
We have a motion to approve the Architecture and Site Application by Commissioner Bujua, second by Commissioner Smith. Therefore, discussion of the motion. Commissioner Talisfor?
Although I think that the design of the house is, would fit in, I do have to probably disagree. And probably, not probably, but I do agree with the town architect. I think he took a long look at this. And I do think that shed roof would have been a better choice. And so for that reason, I probably will not be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Talisfor. Other comments on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? The motion passes four to one with Commissioner Talisfor voting against. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal the decision to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. They must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. I have a report from the Director of Community Development.
Yes, since we last met, the Development Review Committee on April 30 approved two projects. One was at 15500 Los Gatos Boulevard for minor exterior alterations to a commercial building, the existing automobile dealership, Moore Buick, is doing some exterior alterations, minor addition to their parts store. That was approved. As well as 16875 Placer Oaks Road. That's one that the planning commission had considered and remanded back to the DRC for action. They made modifications to the satisfaction of staff, and that project was approved. And no members of the public spoke on either item. Anyone who wants to see plans for either of those projects can come down to Community Development Department between 8:00 and 1:00 by due through Friday and take a look at those. As some of you may be aware, Monday night, the council heard the appeal of Lucy and granted that appeal. They stated that, you know, ultimately understood planning commission's deliberations, but, and that it probably was a policy decision that rested with them, but that they didn't think that the proposed use was going to detract from the downtown mix. And it was a specific type of women's apparel, so that they felt that that was actually potentially diversify the women's apparel choices in the area. And that it was replacing a formula retail in an existing formula retail space. Next to last, the Albright Town Council, the Albright Hearing has been scheduled for Town Council. It will be heard by the Town Council on May 20. So an item will be going out on what's new, anyone watching. We've notified a number of people who are following this project. And so I'm sure the word is getting out, but it will be reviewed on May 20. And if there's any questions before my last item, I think, Commissioner Talisfor, do you have a question?
I didn't. I don't have a question. I just have to make a comment. I had a chuckle the other night when I watched the Town Council meeting, and someone, one of the council members thought that the vote for Lucy was rather gender-based. And I would like to assure them that it was not gender-based at all. It was based on policy. So thank you.
Could I have a question for, could you remind me of the Placer Oaks project again? You gave the address, but it's-
It's, it's the one that's right next to the office building, across from Swanson, that building with the big tree in the front, that we were concerned about mass and scale in the second story not being setback. It was that project.
Okay. Thank you.
And lastly, Mazharin Akaria is, doesn't come here often, but she's now moving on to Brilliner Cohen, who's a law firm. And so she will be pursuing that passion soon. So this will be the last time you'll get to see her. And thank you for being so nice to her and not asking her any questions. I'm sure she's pleased.
Shall we give you the floor for a moment?
No, thank you.
Are there other commission matters from any member of the commission? If not, we're adjourned. If not, we adjourn.